Okay.
It's okay.
That's amazing.
Yeah. Everybody else is pretty much gonna be.
I can't.
I can, but.
Yes, I believe so. I just want to make sure if I get a chance to really do an email or something.
That's funny.
I'm gonna do it all day, so I'm.
Yeah. We make sure that's part of our city.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'm behind, I'm retarded.
I was eating pizza.
Sixty. Exactly. I tried to say. Stacy, Nick.
Okay. You do. Gotta go.
He called me today.
Yeah, you told me. There you go. Scroll down. Scroll down. Right after the mayor report. Who's three?
Uh huh. Interesting. I've volunteered for. Committee for years.
Good evening and welcome to the Crestwell City Council meeting, January eighth, two thousand and twenty-four. Would you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America's stance, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for coming this evening. Tonight, we begin actually with a meeting of the Crestwell Urban Renewal Agency, which happens every January and I think every June. Yes, Manager Amber?
I did not hear whether or not Chair or Member Holt is here tonight?
I had that down for the regular meeting part, but I can do that now.
Okay, thank you.
So yes, we are down one member of our council, Councilor Stacy Holt, is ill. So she is not here and that's an excused absence. Thank you, Manager Amber. So we begin tonight with a meeting of the Urban Renewal Agency. And the first item, City Council, is the Consent Calendar. You have in your packet the minutes from the June twelfth, two thousand twenty-three meeting of the Urban Renewal Agency. So in the approval of the minutes, all items are considered routine unless there is something in here that you notice as an error that need to be pulled for correction purposes. So Councilor, is there anything in the minutes from the Urban Renewal Agency meeting that need to be pulled for correction? If not, then I am entertaining a motion to approve the minutes as presented. Councilor Osborne?
I move to approve the minutes as presented.
All right, we have a.
For June twelfth, two thousand twenty-three.
Thank you, Councilor Osborne. We have a motion on the floor. Is there a second? Councilor Clark seconds the motion. Any further discussion? Council will vote. All those in approval, please raise your hand. All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. We move to the Urban Renewal Agency Fiscal Impact Annual Report. Manager Amber?
Thank you, Mayor. I apologize that Jim isn't here tonight to answer your questions, but I will do my best. This is an annual report that we prepare that provides you with financial information on the Urban Renewal District. And it has to be prepared according to law, and it has to have specific things in it, and it has to be published. So tonight is the first step in verifying this, bringing it before you, having you noted, having you adopt it, and then we will publish it twice in the newspaper.
Okay, so.
According to the report, we don't anticipate any expenditures this coming year. The revenues that have come in are pretty small, thirty-two thousand, one hundred and sixty-two dollars. So it's pretty difficult to do a capital project when that's all that you have to work with. So we will be using that money, though, to offset the loan that we took from the general fund several years ago when we purchased the right of way.
Okay, Council, any questions from Manager Amber? Councilor Castillo?
If I get my mic on, just when do you foresee that happening?
What?
Using the funds to pay off that loan?
We are, we currently are paying off the loan. We made the loan to purchase the right of way, and that's been completed. So now we have a debt, indebtedness on the books. Urban renewal agencies, urban renewal areas only work off of debt. So now it has debt, and so now it can pay the debt back.
Any idea when that will be paid back?
It will be paid back in full? No, we really don't know. I mean, we keep hoping that the tax increment will grow. We have a pretty small tax increment right now because there's so little development. Obviously, the moratorium is going to affect that as well because the areas within the urban renewal area require infrastructure investment. So down the road, once we get the loan paid off for the right of way, we can start looking at taking on more debt to put in sewer, water, and roads.
Thank you, Mayor Amber.
Any additional questions from the council? Okay, then we need to, we need to adopt this report, approve it?
Approve it, yes, please.
All right, so I'm entertaining a motion from the council to approve the Urban Renewal Agency Fiscal Impact Annual Report, two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three. Looking all around for someone who would like to make a motion. Councilor Castillo?
I would make a motion to approve the fiscal report for the urban renewal for fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four?
Two, twenty-three.
Twenty-two, two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three.
Yes, thank you.
We have a motion on the floor. Is there a second? Councilor Osborne, second?
I have a second.
Motion, thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All right, council will proceed to vote. All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed, same sign. And with that, motion passes unanimously, and the Urban Renewal Agency meeting is adjourned. And now a call to order, the regular business meeting for this evening. And we begin tonight with the Oath of Office administered by the Honorable R. Scott Palmer, our municipal judge. So Judge Palmer, I turn it over to you.
Thank you very much. Mayor Stram, City Councilors, Manager Amber. Welcome citizens of Crestwell. Welcome friends and family and well wishers, and welcome to the press, interested observers, and those of you who are just discovering you're in the wrong place. The ceremony that we are about to perform administering the Oath of Office is auspicious. It marks the beginning of the service for a new city councillor, Clark Kent. It is both a time of beginning and a time of renewal. We've had quite a year in two thousand twenty-three, and it seems like every time I am invited to perform the Oath of Office, we've had a heck of a year before we get here, and we're worried about the future and those sorts of things. It appears to me, and this is only my opinion, we are being tested whether government of the people, by the people, and for the people will long endure. The recurring theme is described perfectly in the opening paragraph of Charles Dickens' A Tale of Two Cities and his description of the time of the French Revolution. I've said this before, but it still applies. So let's have a better year in two thousand twenty-four so I can change the language of the oath. But in Charles Dickens' words, "It was the best of times, it was the worst of times." I'll skip the rest of the quote for the sake of time. "In short, the period was so far like the present period that some of the noisiest, noisiest authorities insisted on it being received for good or for evil in the superlative degree of comparison only. In short, the period was so far like the present period that some of the noisiest..." Well, I just said that. Sorry. I think it bears repeating, but twice is enough. I think we are blessed here in the city of Crestwell with, I think, are truly the best of times. Energy and optimism here at the local level permeates our public business and temperament. Thanks to all the folks who serve the city and its citizens. So let us renew today our appreciation, our reverence, and our thirst for the most basic principles that are the foundation of our body politic: freedom, justice, life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. Through our elected and appointed officials, let us carry on and accomplish the necessary, important, and important business of the city of Crestwell. Now down to business. Please hold your applause until I give you the high sign that says now it's time to applaud. So I ask Mr. Kent and his family members to come forward. I understand you brought your family Bible. Okay. Please place your hand on the Bible. Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I.
I.
Clark Kent.
Clark Kent.
Swear or affirm.
Swear or affirm.
Under penalty of perjury.
Under penalty of perjury.
That I promise.
That I promise.
That I will perform my duties.
That I will perform my duties.
In good faith.
In good faith.
Openly.
Openly.
Honestly.
Honestly.
And civilly.
And civilly.
I promise that to the best of my ability.
I promise that to the best of my ability.
That I will always seek to do.
That I will always seek to do.
What is in the best interest of the community.
What is in the best interest of the community.
And not just that.
And not just that.
Which will benefit me personally.
Which will benefit me personally.
I also promise.
I also promise.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the State of Oregon.
The Constitution of the State of Oregon.
And the Home Rule Charter of the City of Crestwell.
And the Home Rule Charter of the City of Crestwell.
So help me God.
So help me God.
So this is the photo op moment. So anybody who wants to take pictures of our new city councillor and family or that sort of thing, now is the time.
Thank you.
Not yet, Mike. He doesn't follow directions, does he? Now, since this may be the last time he hears this, please stand and join me in giving him a rousing round of applause. With that, my task here is done. Mayor Stram, I turn the meeting back over to you, and I look forward to seeing all the councillors again in court.
Will be here.
As observers.
Thank you very much, Judge Palmer. And welcome.
Thank you very much.
Councillor.
Thank you. Delighted to speak here.
The next item on our agenda is the public forum, where members of the public are invited to speak to the council for up to three minutes apiece on a subject that is near and dear to their heart. Grace, do we have anyone who signed up to speak tonight? Manager Amber?
Maybe I've got it backwards.
Oh, so you elect the council president first?
That's what I have.
That's what's on here. I just got so excited to move forward. All right, so our other order of business. Every year in January, we elect a council president who serves for one year. And this is set forth in our charter for states. At its first meeting each year, the council must elect a president from its membership. The president presides in the absence of the mayor and acts as mayor when the mayor is unable to perform duties. So this last year, we were served very well by Council President Castillo. And thank you for your services last year.
Thank you, Mayor.
And now the floor is open for nominations to serve for the coming year. Councilor Clark?
Sorry, I've got so many things over here. I moved, or I would like to nominate Alonzo Castillo to continue to serve as council president.
All right. Councilor Osborne?
I nominate Shelley Clark.
Okay. Any additional nominations? So is there any reason why if either one of you were nominated, you would elect not to serve? Councilor Clark?
Sorry, there's still things over here. I would, I would encourage the council to consider my involvement with Lane Act as a committee, and that might be something that would, that would take up a significant amount of time for me in terms of committee involvement. And so I would encourage support of Council President Castillo, and I am so gracious and humbled by your nomination.
Okay. All right, so we will vote in the order that we receive nominations. We'll vote for Councilor Castillo first, and Councilor Clark. Each get one vote, okay? So those in favor of Councilor Castillo as council president, please raise your hand. Is it unanimous? Okay. Then, Councilor Castillo, congratulations, you will serve as council president for another year.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council.
Okay, now we go to public forum, and we didn't have anyone sign up to speak, correct? Okay.
Manager Amber, I did not vote because I was under the impression of the, because there is financial, the financial gain, there's a small increase to the stipend, so I did not, I should have maybe reclusive myself, so that's why I did not vote.
Thank you.
So we have another signed up for public forum. We're going to move on to the mayor's report. And first of all, I just want to thank Councilor Castillo for chairing the December eighteenth special meeting. You did a wonderful job, and I was planning to be here up till almost the last minute and then got a phone call that my brother-in-law had died in UG. My wife was alone in his apartment waiting for the mortician to arrive, and I thought if I had to choose between sitting with my wife or being here, I should be with my wife. And the mortician arrived at eight P M. So thank you very much for serving in a very challenging meeting. You did a fine job. We begin tonight with a recognition of past councillors and planning commissioners. So I think we have some plaques here. We have three people that we want to recognize tonight, and this is another good time for photo op. So the first one is Tammy Sushuk. Tammy, would you come up?
Fashion advisor says remove the scarf.
Oh, okay. And this says, "Awarding, making the difference. Awarded to Tammy Sushuk in grateful appreciation and distinguished recognition of your hard work, dedication, and commitment to excellence, City of Crestwell, City Councillor, two thousand twenty-two and two thousand twenty-three."
Thank you.
Thank you very much for serving.
Appreciate the recognition. I enjoyed serving. I encourage everyone else to consider serving your city. Thank you.
Thank you. Any photos you want to get here? You need to introduce who came with you tonight.
Have my daughter Ruth, my daughter Savannah, and her boyfriend Gavin.
Thank you for coming. Thanks for letting your mom serve.
Thank you.
That takes time. Next, I'm going to call Patrick Gehring to come up. Patrick, this says, "Years of Service Presented to Patrick Gehring in appreciation of your commitment to exceptional years of service. Your eagerness to exceed expectations has made you a key asset to the Planning Commission. Thank you for your continued dedication, City of Crestwell Planning Commissioner, Commissioner, two thousand eighteen to two thousand twenty-three."
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Anything you want to say?
No. It's been a pleasure. It's been fun.
Thank you very much, Patrick. We have one more, but I don't believe Richard is here. This, this goes to Richard Zetterwald. Many of you remember Richard. Richard and Linda, when they first moved to Crestwell, they wanted to get involved right away, so he volunteered to serve on a, an ad hoc committee that was working on public safety. Then I think I appointed him to a vacant seat on the council, then he ran for council, then became council president, then he became mayor. And then when he stepped away from mayor, I said, "You got to come back in some capacity." So he came back as a member of the Planning Commission and served for another two years. But just recently, his wife has taken a turn for the worse in terms of her health, and Richard sent a nice letter saying, "I have to step down." So Richard is not able to be here tonight, but I said I would make sure we got that to Richard. So round of applause for a man who has served Crestwell for many, many years. All right, now we move to committee appointment and charges. This also is dealt within our city charter under section eight, Mayor, where it says, "With the consent of council, the mayor appoints members of commissions and committees established by ordinance or resolution." So each year in January, we set forth all of the different committees that serve the city, and we give the charges. And then once those charges are given, then the committees are authorized to begin meeting at their discretion and working on their charges. Each charge has also the timeline and the members of the commission or the committee and the staff support. So I'm going to begin with the three standing committees for the city council. The first standing committee for city council is Administration and Finance. The charge is, A, at the first meeting, select a secretary who will keep minutes of all meetings and submit them to the city recorder. B, review the performance evaluation process and timeline with the city council at the February work session. C, conduct the annual performance evaluations for the city manager, municipal judge, and city attorney. Timeline, review the performance evaluation process and timeline at the February council work session. Conduct all performance evaluations according to the timeline adopted by the council. Provide monthly reports at council work session. The appointees are Chair, Alonzo Castillo, and Councilor Shelley Clark, Stacy Holt. Staff support from City Manager and Finance Director. The second standing council committee is Transportation and Public Works. Charge, A, at the first meeting, select a secretary who will keep minutes of all meetings and submit them to the city recorder. B, serve on the Water Rate Advisory Committee. At the first meeting, select a chair, then read section forty-seven of the water rates from the Crestwell City Charter. With the adopted methodology, review City of Crestwell water rates and recommend a rate to the city council for fiscal year two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five. C, with the Water Rate Advisory Committee, review City of Crestwell sewer rates and recommend a rate to the city council for fiscal year two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five. D, with the Water Rate Advisory Committee, review the City of Crestwell transportation utility fee and make a recommendation on the amount of the transportation utility fee for two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five. E, each committee member should consider scheduling a tour of the public works facility, the water and sewer treatment facilities, and road projects currently scheduled to gain further knowledge of these services. F, review the safe routes to school recommendation on reinstalling the crosswalk at Eighth and Eighth Street and bring a recommendation to the council. Timeline, the Chair of the Water Rate Advisory Committee will present the water and sewer rate recommendations and a transportation utility fee amount recommendation for two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five at the February council work session. This recommendation will be included in budget preparation and presented to the City Budget Committee in May. A public hearing on water and sewer rate recommendations will be held prior to the adoption of the two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five budget. Complete item F in a timely manner and provide monthly updates at council work sessions. Appointees, Chair, Shelley Clark, Councillors Stacy Holt, Clark Kent. Staff support, City Manager and Director of Public Works. The third standing council committee is Public Safety. Charge, A, at the first meeting, select a secretary who will keep minutes of all meetings and submit them to the city recorder. B, review the city municipal code as it relates to fireworks and bring any recommended revisions to the council for consideration. C, meet with Sergeant Speldrich to discuss the date of the national night out event and participate in planning this event. D, each committee member should consider scheduling a ride along with Sergeant Speldrich or one of our deputies to gain further knowledge of their work in Crestwell. Timeline, bring any suggested revision to the city municipal code as it relates to fireworks to the April council work session. Provide monthly reports at council work sessions. Appointees, Chair, Nick Smith, Councillor Clark Kent, Norma Osborne. Staff support, City Manager and Lane County Sergeant Alex Speldrich. And then there's a note, which comes out of the City Municipal Code, chapter two, dot zero five, City Council, section, on council committees, and it reads as follows. Members of the council shall not, shall not attempt to lobby or influence committee members on any items under their consideration. It is important for city advisory bodies to make objective recommendations to the council on items before then. Councillors that attempt to influence committee members on an item may prejudice or hinder their role in reviewing the recommendation as a member of the council. So what that boils down to is each council committee has three members on it. If you're not on that council committee, you're not to attend those council meetings. You're not to attend those meetings of that committee. And if you did, there would then be four councillors in a meeting as well, so you would constitute a quorum of the council. So that's the gist of that. The, the committees are intended to do their own work without the influence of additional councillors. The, the whole body of councillors receives monthly updates and recommendations from the committees. We also have the Land Area Commission on Transportation, and Councilor Clark is our council appointee with staff support from City Planner Thomas. We also have the Lane Council of Governments, and Mayor Stram serves as the appointee to Elco with staff support from Manager Amber. There are additional committees as well in Crestwell. The first one is the Water Rate Advisory Committee. The charge is, at the first meeting, to select a chair and a secretary, keep minutes of all meetings, and submit them to the city recorder. Read section forty-seven, water rates from the Crestwell City Charter. With the adopted methodology, review City of Crestwell water rates and recommend a rate to the city council for fiscal year two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five. Review City of Crestwell sewer rates and recommend a rate to the city council for fiscal year two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five. And review the City of Crestwell transportation utility fee and make a recommendation on the amount for two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five. Timeline, the Chair of the Water Rate Advisory Committee will present the water and sewer rate recommendations and a recommended transportation utility fee amount at the February work session. This recommendation will be included in budget preparation and presented to the City Budget Committee in May. A public hearing on water and sewer rate recommendations will be held prior to the adoption of the two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five budget. Appointees, our councillors, Shelley Clark, Clark Kent, Stacy Holt, and residents, Tammy Sushuk, Chelsea Pisani, and at large, Dr. Matthew Bayen. Staff support comes from City Manager, our Finance Director, and our Director of Public Works. Then we also have an Airport Commission. The charge is, at the first meeting, select a chair and review chapter two, point three five, Airport Commission from the City Municipal Code. Note that the council representative cannot serve as chair. Airport manager Humble serves as clerk slash recorder to keep minutes and submit them to the city recorder. Charge B, bring a report to the city council on accomplishments from two thousand twenty-three and a work plan for two thousand for 2024. C: Continue work at the airport to fulfill the airport vision, enhance services to airport users, and serve the citizens of Creswell. D: Work with staff to post the most current version of the airport vision on the city's website. E: Create a tie-down policy and bring it to the council for approval. F: Review the Municipal Code, Chapter two point three five point zero five zero, Airport Commission Meetings, and bring a recommendation to the council on the frequency of commission meetings. Timeline: Post the most current version of the airport vision on the city's website by February first. B: Commission Chair to bring a report to the city council on accomplishments from 2023 and a work plan for 2024 at the April council work session. C: Commission Chair to bring a recommendation on the tie-down policy and the frequency of meetings to the April council work session. D: Provide monthly reports at council work sessions. Appointees are Counselor Alonso Castilla; at-large members Mike Anderson, Patrick Dodson, and airport users Jim Orglioso and Kyle Bushman. Staff support: City Manager Amber and Airport Manager Humble. A third committee that we have is the Parks and Trees Advisory Board. The charge: At the first meeting, select a chair and a secretary, keep minutes of all meetings, and submit them to the city recorder. B, at the first meeting, review chapter twelve point two zero, Streets, Trees, and Parks and Trees Advisory Board from the City Municipal Code and ordinance number four ninety-three, creating a Parks and Trees Advisory Board. C: Present a list of all the names that meet the city's naming criteria for the new South Second Street Park, along with your top recommendations. D: Plan the Arbor Day celebration. E: Continue work on signage about birds in Garden Lane Park and the creation of a pollinator garden. F: Continue work on the placement of bird and bat houses around Creswell. Timeline: A, present a list of names and top recommendations for the South Second Street Park at the January council work session. B, provide monthly reports at work sessions on the Arbor Day celebration and items E and F in the charge. Appointees: Counselor Norma Jean Osborne; Residence Brent Murphy; Bonita Samuels; Stuart Samuels; Peter Osborne; at-large, Riley Newman; and Emily Lefon. Staff support: City Manager Amber. Then there's a note here that says, "The council representatives to the Water Rate Advisory Committee, Airport Commission, and Parks and Trees Advisory Board have the responsibility to bring the charge to their committee at the first meeting. Please review the charge and timeline at the first meeting. At monthly work sessions, the council representative will bring reports to the council on progress made towards fulfilling the charge." Next, we have the Planning Commission. The charge is, at the first meeting, select a chair, vice-chair, and secretary, keep minutes of all meetings, and submit them promptly to the city recorder. Continue work as directed in the enacting ordinance. Appointees are Residents Seth Clark, Ed Gunnison, and Susan Bennett; at-large, Jessica Lannstra and Bill Spencer. There are two vacancies which we will be interviewing for an appointee tonight. Staff support comes from City Planner Curtis Thomas. The Budget Committee. The charge is to review and approve a budget for fiscal year 2024-25 to be adopted by the city council at the June council meeting. Appointees are: Mayor Stram; Counselors Clark, Castilla, Holt, Kent, Osborne, and Smith; Residents Christina Corsi, Robert Jackson, Shaymon Mickelson, Douglas Doug Orton, and Cameron Burke. There are two vacancies on the Budget Committee. Staff support comes from Budget Officer Jim Piper and City Manager Amber. So council, with your consent, we will approve the committee's charges and appointments for 2024. Do I have council consent? All right, thank you very much. Now we move on to the Planning Commission interviews and appointments. We have three applicants for two positions, which is always a nice problem to have, but the hard thing is, somebody goes away and didn't get appointed. And if you've ever been in that position where somebody else was making a decision that impacted you, it can be a little disconcerting at times when you're excited about something. So I want to say we have three great candidates, and I'm thrilled about that. And whichever of you doesn't get appointed, please consider serving on the Budget Committee, which goes into effect in May. Budget Committee meets twice in May, and the Budget Committee is comprised of fourteen members, the entire seven members of the council, plus seven residents. So we fill this dice with fourteen people, and if you know the budget of the City of Creswell, you know a lot about the priorities of Creswell and what we're doing, because that's where we're spending our money. So I encourage you to consider that. Our three council applicants, our three Planning Committee applicants, let me get to my right piece of paper, are, would you just stand, Ellen Mole; remain standing, Joshua Johnson; and Lisa Benson. All right, so we're going to give you the option whether you want to remain here during the interview or go to the other room. I don't know that you need to go to the other room particularly. You can just stay here if you'd like, but if you'd rather be recessed to the side room, you may please do so. We're going to interview you in this order. First, Ellen Mole; second, Joshua Johnson; and third, Lisa Benson. So please go ahead and take your seat unless you would choose to go into a different room. And we have four questions for each of you, and then after the four questions, I'm just going to ask for input from the council. This is an appointment, so the mayor makes the appointment. But prior to that appointment, I'm going to look to the council for any input you have, and then I will make an appointment. Our first candidate is Ellen Mole. Would you just come up here to the podium, please? And we're going to begin down here on the left end with Counselor Clark, ask the first question; Counselor Kent, the second question; then Counselor Castilla, the third question; then Counselor Osborne, the fourth; Counselor Smith, the fourth question. Okay, I think I have an extra copy here.
If it helps, it's on page four of your packet.
Page four.
All right. Hello, good evening. What interests you about serving on the Planning Commission?
Can you guys hear me? Okay. So thank you for your question, Counselor. When I first moved to Creswell three years ago with my husband over here, I didn't know a single person. I quickly began to know my wonderful neighbors and found that in order to feel included in the community, I needed to become involved. For the year I lived in town, it was during the, for the first year I lived in town, it was during the pandemic. I was a recent college graduate, so I started my own business and worked as a freelance graphic designer from home here in Creswell. Each day I drove through town, I thought how I could make a difference and how I could do something differently to become more involved. The first thing I did was make it, to make a change, was move my graphic design business out of my home and into the community. This did wonders for me and not only improved my business, but it improved my quality of life here. A few months later, I took a contract position as the Southland Venture Catalyst with Rain Catalysts, serving Creswell and Cottage Grove communities. I've now worked with this nonprofit, supporting startups and existing businesses with entrepreneurial support for over a year and a half, all around Lane County. Through my business and position with Rain, I've worked closely with a number of local businesses and organizations, including the Chamber of Commerce and now The Grange. Now I feel more involved than ever, and I know I'm a leader in the community. I'm at a point in my life right now where I feel like I'm where I'm supposed to be. The only thing I feel like I'm really missing in my career is volunteer work. I've thought long and hard about different ways I could get involved to volunteer my time, but I just kept coming back to the Planning Commission. I'm passionate about entrepreneurship, economic development, and I want to be a part of the community's future growth and success here.
How will you make a contribution to the Planning Commission?
Thank you, Counselor. So as a young woman and business owner and mentor, I really aim to bring fresh perspective onto the Planning Commission. I enjoy collaborating with others and consider myself to be a professional creative problem solver by day. I'm eager to share my energy and my mindset with other planning commissioners, as well as serve my community members. Just about every day, I speak to new existing and expanding businesses through my design business and Rain. Through this work, I've learned what the needs are in the community. I hope that by joining the Planning Commission, I'll be able to make a difference.
Thank you, Ellen, for applying for the Planning Commission. My question is, describe any prior experience you have serving on a board or committee.
Okay, thank you for your question. Currently, I sit on one task force. It's in Florence, and it's called the Florence Task Force Collaborative. Although it's not technically a board or a committee, I believe it's still worth sharing. We meet monthly for meetings throughout the year to discuss what's happening in the business world. We share resources, discuss local events and activities going on, as well as find ways to partner and collaborate to fill gaps in Florence and across Lane County. Although I don't currently sit on any local committees, I've had the opportunity to work alongside the Creswell Chamber Board, the Cottage Grove Chamber Board, and the Rain Catalyst Board.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Again, thank you for applying. It does help. Appreciate it. Is there anything else you would like us to know about your interest in the position?
I really just want to thank all of you, each and every one of you, for your time this evening and for your dedication to this community. It really means a lot. I'm happy to be here, standing in front of you today, and hope that you'll find me qualified for this position. If any of you have any further questions, don't hesitate to ask. I'm an open book to really ask me anything. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Okay. Our next applicant is Joshua Johnson. We're going to start with Norma first, and then just wrap it around and do it.
Hello.
Thank you for applying. Thank you all of you for applying. What interests you about serving on the Planning Commission?
Sure. I am very interested in helping to maintain and improve our existing infrastructure, helping increase and improve the services available to Creswell's population, and focusing work on the common goals between Lane County and nearby communities to help achieve the goals more efficiently.
Ms. Clark.
Thank you for your application. How will you make a contribution to the Planning Commission?
Sure. I'll bring a centrist voice to help consider solutions that may be outside the box to best achieve the goals for the community to prioritize safety, well-being, and access to reliable and quality services.
Describe any prior experience you have on serving on a board or a committee.
Sure. So working in the computer security field, I'm an escalation manager by trade. I've worked there for over a decade. It's provided me with the opportunity to work with teams of many different cultures, both foreign and domestic, remotely and in person. Realizing and considering the benefits that all of you has bring to decision-making to achieve a common goal efficiently has led to multiple successful projects with my leadership. I've worked with governments, militaries, Fortune five hundred companies, as well as mom and pop shops here locally with my own company. I've also worked with security team leadership to achieve a FedRAMP certification, which took hours of discussions with auditors, as well as hundreds of pages of technical documentation. I've personally written several hundred technical documents with millions of global views over the last twelve years, and this provides me the ability to communicate and ingest technical data effectively.
Okay, Ms. Castilla.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson, for taking the time and applying. My question is, is there anything else you would like us to know about your interest in this position?
Yeah. I've owned property in Creswell for just over ten years and worked through the city's permitting process to build my home here. It was a process that helped me and my family to understand the constraints the city planner must work within and how technical the process can be. I also own multiple acres in Central Oregon with its own set of limitations and considerations when moving forward to develop a subdivision or a single-family home, and these considerations keep me actively interested and relevant in the planning process. There have been many evenings over the years where I'll review meeting minutes as I'm heading to bed. You know, making sure that we have the best decisions to improve the lives of everybody in this community is like literally what I think about from sunup to sundown. If given the opportunity to serve on the Planning Commission, just know that I'll take it very, very seriously, because it affects all of our lives. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you very much. Okay, our third applicant is Lisa Benson. And we'll start with Counselor Smith.
Hello.
Hello.
Thanks for applying and wanting to be here. It's frustrating to have three people in two spots when it's usually the other way around.
I was told it was a million-dollar position, so.
Huge stipend, I'm sure. What interests you about serving on the Planning Commission?
Honestly, I didn't give it much thought until I retired, and then I said, "Oh, my gosh, I have all this free time. I should do something important." I moved to Creswell in 2009, before this building even existed, actually. I bought a little house over on Gilfrey, and I fixed it up, went through the permitting process, which I found to be interesting. I had never done that before. And I went on to buy two more residential properties here over the course of the next few years. So I feel like I have a vested interest in what happens here in Creswell. I moved here because I was a professor at LCC, and it was the perfect commute, and I was told that Creswell was the perfect bedroom community. But over the last fourteen or fifteen years, it really has grown and developed, and we have yummy places to eat now. The Creswell Bakery was just a little catering company when I got here. So I would like to help see it forward. My PhD is in sustainable tourism development. I got that at the University of Idaho, and I've been working in academics for the last two decades or more. But most of my professional work and my academic work has really focused on planning and development long-term, ten, twenty years out. Sustainable tourism development was like the niche, but honestly, development is development, and the parameters are still the same, just like if you do human resources in a hotel, it's the same in human resources and computer sciences. So I feel like I have a lot to contribute, and I have a lot of free time now, so I thought that I would throw my hat into this busy ring and see what happened.
Thank you. Ms. Osborne. Ms. Osborne, your question.
Okay, I've lost track. Number two. Hi. Thank you for applying. How will you make a contribution to the Planning Commission?
Well, I guess I probably stated a little bit too much in my first response, but my dissertation of four hundred-plus pages was all about development. I had to do it properly. I focused on Central and South America, which doesn't do me much good at LCC, but it did at my previous universities. However, my husband and I, three years ago, bought an acre in rural Panama, five hours from the nearest city, and built something, and so that was pretty cool. Like, I actually got to use my Latin American development part of my education, but honestly, here in Lane County, mostly I worked on large projects like whether or not the Emeralds will get a new stadium so they can stay, and new kids' sports. I helped work on that and various other projects. I was on that committee for over a decade, and we had a lot of big things that we had to work on in order to encourage heads and beds and butts and seats, referring to hotels and restaurants. I feel like I have a lot of background information and knowledge, and I would just like to contribute and give back if I can.
Thank you. Ms. Clark.
All right, again, thank you for your application and your interest. Can you describe any prior experience you have serving on a board or committee?
Lots. Traveling county would probably be the most relevant to where I am here today. I did that for almost a decade, partly as my capacity as a professor at LCC. I was the representative for the supply chain, because our students were considered supply because they're great workers in the community. Scott Pisani, actually, who owns Pazo, was one of my former students, so I like to take a lot of credit for his place, but if he was here, he would speak loudly about that. You know, I did the Lane Community College Foundation. I was the sole faculty member, represented the arm of the school that raises tuition money for students, basically, and large capital projects. In my former life, before I moved here, I did something with the Tourism Association of New Mexico, and I did a lot of foreign work as well, but it's not really relevant to this. But I do have a lot of board and committee experience.
Is there anything else you would like us to know about your interest in this position?
I would just say that I have a really strong background in sustainability and environmental awareness. I think that if I were to be chosen to sit on this committee, I would really try and lead discussions focused on, well, where are we going to be in ten or twenty years? I know that the water situation and the sewer situation definitely is. I know that the water situation and the sewer situation definitely is this moratorium I'm building, but it cruxes in a lot of things. And I think maybe some of my background experience and education and training could help kind of steer around these tricky things. You know, I think about that Foster Farms plant that's sitting out there. Maybe we could utilize that in some way to help with the wastewater treatment plant, since they already had a lot of kooky chicken water over there. I know, I'm sorry. I'm just glad it's not going to be a chicken plant anymore. I speak Spanish. I've lived abroad. I've lived in Switzerland. I've lived in Panama. I've lived in Cuba. And I've lived in several states here throughout my career. And mostly, I've been a professor and I really loved it. So, I'm kind of excited to try and do something different with all this education and experience I've built up.
Thank you very much, Lisa. Okay, counsel. So, I'm just looking for input from counselors as to our three applicants. Councilor Smith.
Can we add opposition?
We probably could, but not tonight. Councilor Osborne.
I just wanted to comment that all three were excellent applicants, and it's going to be difficult to decide.
Councilor Clark.
I am also in concurrence that we have three outstanding candidates for two positions. And so, I also wanted to reiterate that if someone is not selected, mathematically, someone is not going to be selected, but please think about applying for the Budget Committee as well, because, gosh, what a way to have an amazing impact in your community. And so, if you are not selected, please apply, please, 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 apply to the Budget Committee. I guess I just wanted to speak, I don't think that there's any, I have no reason for any pause for any of the candidates that we have in front of us tonight. I think that they're all outstanding candidates. I guess I will speak to Ellen and to Lisa in terms of their candidacy and what it is that they shared with us tonight. I was very impressed with the information that they shared with us and their feedback about the community and their prior experience. So, I was very impressed with them. I will also say that I was also very impressed with Joshua as well. We have three great candidates, folks. That's it.
Anyone else want to give me any input?
Sure, sure, Mayor. I would just concur that we have a great problem to have. We have three outstanding candidates. So, I'm just lucky I don't have to make the appointment. That's your call. But just looking over the, looking over the applications and hearing all our candidates speak, I would just say that two candidates kind of stood out a little more than the others as far as education and experience when it comes to the Planning Commission. And I would say that that would be Lisa and Ellen. But I would say, gosh, I would be pleased with any of the candidates that are selected to serve on the Planning Commission. I'm just glad it's your call.
Councilor Osborne or Councilor Smith? Councilor Osborne.
I kind of agree with his sentiments as far as the difficult choice that Ellen and Lisa would be my first two choices.
Clark, do you have any comments?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor Strand. I was really impressed by particularly Lisa's knowledge of the community, and I would concur with everybody that, who spoke so far, that Lisa and Ellen would be my two choices with no disrespect to Joshua, I would love to have as well.
Councilor Smith.
Whatever I say is pretty redundant. I mean, I can't say anything different than what everyone else has said. I don't have a preference. I think all three are number one, so I feel a little inadequate on some educational here, and I got degrees. So, I really, I think all of you would be great, and thank you for replying, and I can't say enough good things about the applications and the way you spoke and your passion for Crestwell and what you want to do. Really can't. So, all of you have great ideas and where you'd like to see Crestwell go, and some of the comments and everything written down, I just, I really can't say enough, but just thank you and appreciate it.
Okay. Well, thank you all for your input. So, I'm going to make us the appointment, Ellen Moll and Lisa Benson, and encourage Joshua, please consider the Budget Committee. And just to let you know, every year, we have vacancies come up in different capacities in the city. And as you and I have talked, you're an excellent candidate. All three of you, I've had the opportunity to talk to all three of you in the last couple of months, and I've been very impressed with all three of you, what you bring. Because in our city, we regularly need volunteers and are regularly looking for people who step up and say, let me help. So, thank you, and if you don't get a hold of me, I'll get a hold of you soon. So, welcome, Ellen and Lisa. And I would encourage you either to reach out to Curtis, and Manager Amber, you can encourage Curtis to reach out and let you know. The next Planning Commission date is January 18 at 5:30 PM. So, it's coming soon. All right. Thank you all very much. We move on to our next item, which is correspondence. So, council members, do you have any comments about correspondence that we have received? Councilor Clark.
Yes, I have just a little bit of feedback at first. I just want to appreciate, just deeply appreciate the feedback that our community provided for us around the majority of the commentary is kind of around the appointment process for the City Council. And I always appreciate, I mean, I deeply appreciate and value feedback from our community about how you all are feeling and, you know, what it is that you value in decisions. And so, I really appreciate that volume of communication that came in. And I know that it helped me see some things from another perspective, another perspective that I didn't hold. And so, so thank you for that. There was one piece of correspondence that really kind of gave me reason for pause that I wanted to just kind of focus in on, and I believe it came from, it came from Lisa Olson. And what the correspondence talked a little bit was the need for an ad hoc committee to address the pocket park issues. And I think some, one of the things that the correspondence, to me, has really revealed is that I think that we have some work to do within the city of Crestwell, just in terms of understanding the needs of our unhoused population and how we might be able to serve and support and welcome. And so, I just wanted to thank, in particular, Lisa Olson for that, for that correspondence and, like you said, in giving me reason for pause to just like reflect and just really think about what this decision has revealed for us, that we have work to do.
Thank you. Any other comments about correspondence? All right. If not, then we move on to the consent calendar. We have before us the minutes of the work session on November 27th, the City Council meeting on December 11th, and the special meeting of the council on December 18th. All items are considered routine and are enacted by a single motion unless there is anything that needs to be pulled from any of those minutes for correction purposes. So, counselors, is there anything that needs to be pulled from minutes for correction? If not, then I'm entertaining a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented. Councilor Osborne.
I move to accept the consent calendar as presented.
A motion to accept the consent calendar as presented, is there a second? Councilor Smith, any further discussion? Council will proceed to vote. All those in favor raise your hand. All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. All right, we move to the backside, which is the administrative report. Manager Amber.
Thank you, Mayor. The first thing you have are the December bills. Do my best to answer any questions that we may have on those.
So, Manager Amber, I have the question about Wireless Construction Company.
That's part of the airport project, the runway project?
Okay. Councilor Castillo.
The, it looks like they're called the Painter, P-A-Y-N-T-E-R. I'm just curious as to what service they do provide for city of Crestwell?
Where did you see that?
That is...
Oh, the painter.
33590. It's the first page.
Yeah. It's $825. That could be the decorations on the outside of City Hall for Christmas.
Okay, okay. That makes sense. Not P-A-I-N-T, P-A-Y-N.
Yeah.
Any other questions on your financial report?
Okay. Moving right along, the next report that you have is the deputy's report, the County Sheriff Calls for Service report. We have Sergeant Speldridge here to answer any questions you might have on that report.
Good evening, everyone. Got good news and bad news. We'll start with the bad news, okay? Our calls for service are way up this last month. And if you look at the numbers, our property crimes were double our average. That's the bad news. The good news coming from that is that the person who we believe is responsible for almost probably 80% of those property crimes is, he's been arrested and is awaiting extradition to another state because of some stuff from another state that's been following this person. So, we were happy to put an end to that, and I'll say that since that person's been taken in custody, the property crimes dramatically reduced. It was almost night and day. So, just want to throw that out there before everyone looked into the numbers and said, hey, what the heck's going on in Crestwell? Other than that, if you figure that out of the equation, we're pretty steady. You'll notice that the pocket park doesn't have anybody currently regularly staying in it as of a couple of weeks ago. We have our same couple of people that are moving around the downtown district, and there are RVs that they're complying with the 72-hour rule. And we had a large amount of civil service for some reason this last month. Sometimes it just, the papers come in and we got to get out and serve them. So, I am happy to answer any questions, if anyone has any.
Counselor Castillo and then Smith. Councilor Castillo.
Thanks for, you answered my question about the property crimes. But let me ask, how was the criminal apprehended? Was it COTM Act? Was...
No, it's a known suspect that we had been looking for for a while, and we had eventually pinpointed to where they were at, and we were able to take that suspect into custody without them being able to flee. So, that was a win. It is particularly challenging because our suspect is actually a juvenile. And so, we couldn't employ some of our normal police tactics based on that information. So, it was particularly hard to catch up to this person because of that.
Well, thank you. Pardon your efforts, Sergeant.
Thank you.
Councilor Smith.
Comment and question. Comment first. Thank you for being an awesome job, and I'd like to say thank you for Sheriff Hills for tracking down the theft at my boys and getting wheels and tires back. That sounded like that was pretty extensive work, and I think our sheriffs in this town do an awesome job, and I just want to make sure that Crestwell is on, is behind you and appreciate you, and that you guys really do awesome. And I feel better protected. I feel like my kids are safer coming through here when I see you when I drop them off at schools. And these cases like this that are a lot more difficult than people think, and like you said with the juvenile, I just want to say thanks. I really, I really do appreciate you guys. I think you're well worth the money, and we've only benefited from you taking over and so many other sheriffs gaining more experience and knowledge. So, I just want to make sure, I don't think Courtney really got the appreciation of the law. It sounded like he did a lot of law work, so I just want to say it tonight and say it out loud, and appreciate you and your leadership for those guys. And then, on the comment or the question is just, what was the Measure 11 crime that we had?
So, the Measure 11 was a, it's what we refer to as a historical rape, where the suspect is known to the victim, and this is something that, you know, may have occurred years ago, months ago, but it's not an in-progress situation. In this situation, it was a known suspect. It was a former partner of that person. And without getting into the nitty-gritty, some things went sideways, and that's why it became a criminal thing.
Is that, did we have it on the information packet last time? Is that the same one? Is it open or closed?
This is a new one. I only report the new cases on here. So, any type of follow-up doesn't get reported on these new calls for service.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilor Clark.
I feel like I always have a question for you. So, I will continue that pattern is, so first, I just also wanted to say thank you for your work and for the deputies' work. You do a fantastic job, and you are so deeply appreciated by your community. So, I think most of the normal questions that I want to make sure get asked are asked, and so I have an additional one. And mostly, it's, gosh, I noticed that there has been three calls for speed citations, and so I just wanted to check in on that because as I hear individuals driving, it sounds like they're going fast, although I have no way of verifying that. That's just what, how it lands on my ears. I was wondering if you could speak to that.
Well, I actually wrote all three of these speed citations. There's kind of a trend. I'm the traffic guy, I guess. But each of these was, all three of these were written in the same Highway 99 near our lot, by the post office, people just flying into town, flying out of town. I've probably heard the same vehicles you've heard, and it's always a matter of I try to whip my head around and see and go, hey, who was that? Try to catch it in the act, but I've so far been fairly unsuccessful at that. So, I would encourage anybody, if there's a trend of a specific area, a specific time, please call us and let us know because I would love to get people to slow down, not just the ones I can catch up to. So...
Okay. Any other questions? Oh, Councilor Osborne.
Have there been any changes in our hostless population?
I don't think so. And I'm saying that with an asterisk next to it. And the reason why is because I haven't seen a couple of people lately, and I'm not sure if they've relocated within our area or if they're now out of our area in a better situation, staying with somebody. I'm not sure. I know that one of our longtime, you know, unhoused individuals that was staying at the pocket park has been in jail for a while for a case from last month. So, he's, I don't, depends on if you count him or not. It's pretty, pretty much around that same number. You know, I'm estimating still between six to eight full-time, you know, living in vehicles or somewhere in our area. So, that's, it's not a perfect science. I wish it was because I'd love to be able to tell you the exact number. You have one addendum. I have a note here I didn't mention. This one garnered quite a bit of social media and a lot of questions. There was a vehicle a couple of weeks ago that ran from one of my deputies down here, and the driver ended up clean on foot. It happened over off South Second, kind of in the area of the pocket park. The reason I bring it up is because it brought the whole force of the county. We had all of our on-duty deputies from the main office down here. We had a K-9 out looking for this guy. We had state troopers coming. Cottage Grove Police came. And I wanted to bring this up because it just shows that we only have our four full-time deputies here and then me, so five full-time. But when something goes down, it's everything. It's everybody. And I'm super thankful for the coordination with the other agencies. Unfortunately, we didn't catch the suspect. But the coordination with the other agencies, we didn't even have to ask Cottage Grove for help. They already were coming. You know, we didn't have to ask OSP for help. They were here already. So, I wanted to just mention that, so...
Is that the one that ended up in my front yard in the middle of the night?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. That is the same one.
But you didn't catch the person. But you didn't catch the person?
No, we didn't. I, although I, we have a pretty good idea of who it was, so...
Okay.
He has his car. If he wants to come get his car, I'll give it back to him.
Okay, any other questions? Thank you very much, Sergeant Speldridge.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sergeant. The next report is the city attorney report. Be happy to try and answer any questions you might have on that.
Pacific Corps franchise, can you, can you share with us what that, what is that?
Um, we have franchise agreements with various utilities, um, because they use our right-of-way, so it's kind of like they're paying rent for using our property. And Pacific Corps is our electric franchise, and it is up for renewal, and so we started working on the negotiations to renew that franchise. The franchise dollars are very important, um, they're a very important part of our general, uh, fund, and so, uh, we do take them very seriously and try to negotiate something good for Crestwell. Uh, the next is the code enforcement report. There are no questions on that. Uh, the building permit recap report, you can see what our building activity looks like, uh, in our city. And then you have the strategic plan quarterly update, uh, for the last quarter of two thousand and twenty-three. I apologize, I had the third quarter of two thousand and twenty-three at the top, which is actually the fourth quarter of two thousand and twenty-three. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have on the strategic plan update.
Does anyone have questions before I share a couple of mine? Counselor Castillo.
I do have one, just a quick question. Uh, the, um, well, great amount of work, Manager Amber, and great report, and they, under performance indicators, um, it's almost the last bullet there, above goal two, safety for all, updated wastewater facilities, plan, plan that complies with DEQ permitting requirements. Wes Yos has been hired to work on the plan update. Forgive me, I'm looking for, uh, Public Works completed the report for smoke testing and repairs, which resulted in the addition of fifteen more wastewater connections for a total of thirty available connections. So, how, how was that? I mean, that is, uh, more than what the moratorium allowed, correct?
Um, no, the way that the moratorium works, well, it, the moratorium is separate than the, the permit we have from DEQ. But the moratorium will allow us to connect, but it does as, as we can, but what it does is it protects us from somebody who wants to protect when we can't. So, um, the, the permit from the DEQ actually provides more connections as we work towards the solution they want us to see. So, as we work towards that, we'll be getting more and more connections. So, that's how come we have fifteen or thirty, which is great because we just had a developer come in with an excess of thirty units, um, wanting to build their houses, and they're, they brought in their plans and they're moving forward now, so they will be able to put in thirty houses, well, twenty-nine houses, because one person got ahead of them in the line.
Well, maybe it was a question for, uh...
Does that make sense?
Uh, yeah, yes and no. The, um, and maybe it's a question for, um, Cliff, um, is, I guess, how, how did the smoke testing come up with another fifteen?
Um, there is a chart of what we have to accomplish with dates on it, um, and so, one of the top things on the chart to check off was smoke testing and developing the report and getting it approved by DEQ.
Okay.
We did that, check it off, we get fifteen.
Got you, okay, and yes, it was a good thing, somebody was good.
Yeah, yeah, it's very good, and we're trying to move through that list as quickly as possible.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, that, that actually was, um, the same page, just the next item says completed rebuild of South Second Street. So, um, does that mean we completed the engineering phase or the surveying? That's our next major road project is South Second.
Right, we've completed the surveying. Now, those surveys go to the engineer and they start working on, um, the line drawings and things like that of what the, the, the actual, um, project will be. So, we should be getting some line drawings sometime in the nearby future, I think.
Do we have a hope as to when that construction might take place?
Do you have it? Uh, it's on our CIP, um, capital improvement plan, it'll be updated for this next budget. Um, I think we're still a year or so out, is that correct, Cliff?
Yeah, two thousand and twenty-five is what we're shooting for.
Okay. Then on page number four, I just had a question near the bottom, this is under goal three, community education outreach, objective number two D, stormwater utility tri-fold brochure produced and distributed. I don't remember seeing that, did that, did the council see that?
I think we have it available here at City Hall, um, for people who have questions about it.
That has to do with our, our stormwater, the process we're gonna be going through this year as well, right?
Yeah, we probably need to brush it off and, and get it fired up again because we are currently, we just kicked off working with the consultant on the stormwater utility fee. So, we will be, we will be proposing another fee come here in the spring, um, that will support this program. So, it is pretty important that we get the information out, so we'll work on that again.
So, is, is this brochure current? Because if so, can we get, can we get it copied to all the counselors?
Sure.
Okay, thank you. And then, um, um, page, I put down page seven, this is under goal four, economic development performance indicator. I just thought it was interesting that it lists the ratio of residents working in Crestwell, nineteen point two percent of residents work in Crestwell. So, does that mean eighty percent of people who live in Crestwell commute, or does this number also include all the children who don't, who go to school? Do you know?
Um, I could provide you with the data. We actually get it from the state, um, and it shows, I think of all the people who are working, um, nineteen point two percent, uh, of our residents work in Crestwell. We have a group of people who come into Crestwell, and then we have a very large group of people who work outside of Crestwell.
Elsewhere. I just thought that was an interesting statistic. Thank you for including that. Okay, any other questions for Manager Amber about the fourth quarter report? Okay.
Okay, um, I want to draw your attention to the rain, um, report that is on here. I did not incorporate it in time, um, for the fourth quarter report, but it goes along with that, and hopefully answers a lot of your questions about what the rain program is and what it does here in Crestwell. So, um, I would encourage you to read through it, I think, I think Ellen did a better job than I would have done if I had just bulleted the items. I think, uh, the pictures are really nice, too, so, um, then the, the, then the next report is the city manager quarterly update, and I'd be happy to try and answer any questions you might have on that.
I don't, I don't have questions, but I like to highlight the splash pad, always splash pad. Everything is installed. This is the splash pad that was built last summer on the new South Second Street Park, and we're waiting for good weather to apply the epoxy paint to the concrete and structures installed this summer. So, that means it'll be turned on this summer, you can go out there and splash around.
That's right, we just need some good weather to put the epoxy paint on there. Um, we have all of the structures, they're ready to go, they're assembled during the, and, uh, the Public Works, um, building, um, just waiting, just laying there waiting for summer to come.
And then I'm thrilled with economic development, item C, about the self-contained sewer treatment system at the airport, system installed, waiting for EPUD to install electric meters.
Mm-hmm, in fact, uh, the most recent, uh, communication was that we're putting three-foot boulders in to protect the equipment.
Three-foot boulders. I think it'd be wonderful for us to have a wastewater ribbon-cutting ceremony. Because we've been waiting for this for years, I mean, over ten years. Yes, Shelley?
Project was complete today, so everything's been switched over, and they left this afternoon there, done with the project.
So, is it operational now?
It is operational.
Congratulations, Shelley.
So, what do you think about a ribbon cutting ceremony?
We can look at that, incorporate it with, uh, ribbon cutting for the runway.
That would be wonderful.
The next step is to connect water so that the sewer system has something to process.
Oh, well, that's important, too. So, I'm hoping, even though I didn't get this into charge, I'm hoping between the Airport Commission and, and Shelley, you can plan some kind of a special event out there to commemorate both the runway and the wastewater, because that has been years in the dreaming and planning.
Yeah, it certainly was. If it hadn't been for the ARPA money, we would never have been able to afford it. Um, and the ARPA money is sufficient enough that we can do the sewer and the water. Right now, there are only two water customers, one is the FBO and the other one is statewide.
The statewide contractor.
Statewide. They each have their own well, so they can actually use the sewer system right now. But, um, once we finish the water system, then everyone can use the sewer system, and it will be a wonderful benefit, um, and a reason to come and use our airport.
An additional reason.
An additional reason, that's right.
And then I was glad to see under infrastructure that we're still making progress with Emmer Valley wastewater at the east side.
Still working on that, yes.
Still working on it. Okay, any other comments, questions? Counselor Clark.
Uh, not so much of a, a, a question, but I just also wanted to just highlight the, all that has been accomplished around staffing needs and team building. Um, I think that that's a tremendous amount of work, and I think really speaks highly to the amount of staff retention that we have, and, and part of the reason that we have such great staff retention, and so, uh, so thank you so much for the work around staffing needs and team building. Um, I think you're building a really strong, um, a long-serving team, uh, here at Crestwell.
We do have an amazing team here. I, I do not take them for granted, and I am grateful every day that I get to work with them. They are wonderful. And then the last report is the Crestwell Clubhouse final report. I included it because it's a wonderful report on what's going on in our Cobalt Building. Um, we own the building, but they own the program, um, and together we have helped to expand the playground there. Laura Rerden, uh, actually received a grant to purchase the playground equipment, and Public Works were to install it, so, um, a good partnership is, that we have there, uh, and it's wonderful to see all the kids being able to have after-school activities, uh, and Laura does a great job.
Questions or comments? Counselor Smith.
I'd like to comment on the clubhouse. I think it's very impressive and it's grown exponentially since you started it, and I think it's a huge asset for the city of Crestwell, and I appreciate all the effort put into the kids, because they're what's gonna change what's going on right now, and I appreciate all the effort you put in, and I just want to comment on that, I think it's been a huge success and the growth has been impressive, and appreciate the city's help and, and everybody else who's donated to the scholarship funds and some of the other small things that people have done to support that, so I just want to highlight that tonight.
The mayor can speak to this better than I can, but that building used to be vacant, and it used to be just sitting there on a piece of land with no grass around it. It was an industrial building, the city took it over, and in a timeframe of fifteen years, it's taken to get it to this spot. So, um, a lot of good people worked on it, a lot of rare, uh, folks, um, and then the city council making sure that we have the right policies in place and we have the right money for it. The city council allowing me to put nonprofits in there so that I not have to worry about the bottom line, so that we could have these great programs. And then Laura has just, she just explodes with excitement, so she makes it a lot of fun, and I'm looking forward to the teen program that we're going to have developing out of there, and she's looking forward to bringing them here after they have a few council meetings to let you know what their thoughts are on Crestwell, so...
Well, the other, the other operation there is the food pantry, and, uh, the food pantry is serving between a hundred and thirty and a hundred and fifty prepared boxes every week. If you go by Thursdays to this food pantry, people are oftentimes lining up at nine o'clock in the morning and open at eleven. So, they're doing just a tremendous work providing additional resources food-wise for people throughout our community.
That's right, and they're going to expand their hours starting in February. Um, they're gonna open up at nine o'clock, so they'll be open more hours and be able to serve more people. And they need donations.
And they need donations, okay. All right, thank you.
That concludes the administrative reports for this, oh...
Counselor Clark.
Um, I also, I, I just wanted to just take a, a few minutes and read a couple of the pieces from the Crestwell Clubhouse report that really stood out to me as, again, just a moment of pause and awe of, of what is possible within our community. And so, um, so two of the pieces, two of the bullet points said that we gave out forty-six thousand, three hundred and thirty-seven dollars in scholarships for thirty-five children. We hosted eight children with a hundred percent scholarship, three children with fifty percent scholarship, and additional twenty-four children with our regular twenty-five percent scholarship, and I think that that is absolutely incredible, and, and as I think about the things that make long-term impact, um, on the future of Crestwell, um, that's one of those things that really stand out to me. Uh, it said that this was made possible by generous donations and foundations which served to directly support local families and their children. Um, and again, and so I just, it, it, it's a moment of awe, uh, of, of what is possible. Uh, the other piece, uh, that I, that really stood out to me and, and, and gave me a moment of pause was the results of the annual surveys were impactful. They revealed a hundred percent of the children enjoy their time at the clubhouse and find it fun. The parent survey resulted in one hundred percent satisfaction with the clubhouse as a secure and welcoming space for positive development of their child, and additionally, ninety-six percent of parents supported, and parents reported improved self-esteem in their students, and eighty-five percent stated their child's grades had improved since beginning at the clubhouse, and I think that that, that underlines what is possible and what is being accomplished, and so, um, I just, I wanted to make sure that I had read that for everyone in case, um, in case somebody had not read that report as much as I had, and, and I just, I just think it's, it's incredible.
Is indeed, good report. Okay, well, that brings us to item eight, and I think for the, well, I could say it's the only time in two thousand and twenty-four we have no council action items, but this is the only time we've met so far, two thousand and twenty-four. A rare thing we don't have council action items, but we will have many of them coming up. Uh, number nine is upcoming meetings, they're all listed here, number ten is adjournment, so we are adjourned. Okay, do we need to get pictures? Heather? Heather?